Welcome, everyone. In accordance with Utah Code 54-4207 for Open Public Meeting Act, I have determined that to protect the health and welfare of Murray citizens, an in-person city council meeting, including attendance by the public, and the city council is not practical or prudent. Considering the continued rise of COVID case counts in Utah, meeting in an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The Center for Disease Control states that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and may be, and may spread by people who are non-symptomatic. It is my intent to safeguard the lives of Murray residents, business owners, employees, and elected officials by meeting remotely through electronic means without an anchor location. You may view the meeting via livestream at murraycitylive.com or via Facebook page on Murray City, Utah. If you would like to submit citizen comments or public hearing comments, you may do so by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to less than three minutes, so about 300 words, including your name and contact information. Include your name, contact, and contact information. Sorry about that. And they will read into the record. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for attending to the Committee of the Whole. We are going to go over minutes. Any, can I get a motion about minutes for May 19, 2020? Or if there's questions, comments, concerns?
I'll move approval if there are no questions or concerns about the minutes for May 19, 2020.
Okay. Thank you. I have a second. Jennifer, can you call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hels.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. That has passed. And we are going to go ahead and start our discussion about nuclear. And let me see, who will be starting that conversation off? Oh, which, Diane, do you want to go ahead and present them?
Yes, I will do that. Thanks, Rosalva. As you all know, this council is about to make a huge financial commitment decision regarding small nuclear reactors, also called SMRs. This is a UAMS project. And so far, we have committed approximately $750,000 plus $20,000 to this project. We have not up to this point had a public hearing. Nevertheless, we have made these monetary commitments. We have received an extraordinary amount of information from UAMS in support of the project and very little else. I've expressed concerns regarding the lack of transparency and the cost of construction and what the actual cost to our customers, our power customers, will be. So as a result, so we can get some further information, I have invited Professor M. V. Romana and Rusty Cannon from the Utah Taxpayers Association to speak to these issues. So first, we will have Professor Romana do his presentation, and I will introduce him. And if I kind of, I don't, actually, if I, if I mess this up a little bit, just stop, please, be patient. Anyway, M. V. Romana is a physicist and the Simon's Chair in Disarmament, Global and Human Security, and Director of the Loo Institute for Global Issues at the School of Public Policy and Global Affairs at the University of British Columbia. He is the author of "The Power of Promise: Examining Nuclear Energy in India", published by Penguin Books in 2012, and is a former member of the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists Science and Security Board. Professor Romana is a member of the International Panel on Physical Materials, the International Nuclear Risk Assessment Group, and the team that produces the annual World Nuclear Industry Status Report. He is the recipient of a Guggenheim Fellowship and a Leo Sillard, I think it's Sillard, award from the American Physical Society. Anyway, Professor Romana, I hope I didn't mess that up too much, and we really appreciate your being here. So if you would like to start your presentation, and then we will have answer, I mean, questions and answer after that, and then we will go to Rusty. Professor Romana.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dan, for the very generous introduction. I'm trying to share my screen. Are you, see, hold on one second. Okay. Okay. Good. Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm sharing my screen. Thank you very much for this generous introduction and inviting me to be part of these deliberations. Just a few words to add to what Diane said. So as Diane mentioned, I'm a physicist by training. My background really has been looking at nuclear energy from a variety of different, in a variety of different areas, but I've had a special focus on small modular reactors for nearly a decade. I used to be part of a project at Princeton University, where I used to work until 2017, when I moved to Vancouver. And over that period, we had done a lot of different kinds of assessments of small modular reactors, including their technical characteristics, their economics, their safety risks, and market potential for these. So that's the background with which I'm speaking. I'm not a lawyer. I won't be able to sort of comment on a contract or anything of that sort. That's for all of you to decide. But I will sort of try to give you some information about SMRs, in particular, the New Scale project, which has been something that's been important for the future of SMRs in the United States for some time. So I'll start with a very brief outline of the history of small modular reactors and how they fit into nuclear power more generally, and also detail a little bit about the kind of history of cost increases as well as trends in the cost of alternative source of energy. And finally, talk a little bit about potential delays that one should be foreseeing with respect to the New Scale UAMS project. So to begin with, I'm going to make a very basic point, which is that small reactors aren't new, right? The world of nuclear power started with small reactors. And in the United States, there were 17 reactors that were constructed in the 1950s and 1960s, which would fit as small reactors under the current definition. The current definition of a small reactor is one that produces less than 300 megawatts of electricity. In comparison, most reactors that are being constructed today typically construct about 1,000 megawatts or 1 gigawatt, give or take a couple of hundred megawatts.
Romana, may I, may I interrupt for a moment? Were we supposed to see your first slide? It's not up on the screen.
Are you able to see anything at all?
We, we see probably something from your computer. It says auto-recovery.
Whoops. Okay.
Let me, do you want me to open mine?
Sure, that would be great. I'm so sorry about that.
There you go.
Okay, so can you go to the second slide?
Yes.
Yeah, and so what I was basically mentioning there was that we've been looking at different aspects of small modular reactors for about a decade, especially since the Fukushima accident started. And that's the perspective from which I'm speaking. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, the following slide, sorry, I've already gone through this.
Oh, you've already gone?
Yeah, and I just mentioned, but this is, yeah, here's where I was. So I was mentioning, there is nuclear power around the world and in the United States, started by building small reactors. In the United States, there were 17 reactors that were built that would technically qualify as small reactors today. The definition of a small reactor is one that produces less than 300 megawatts of power. In comparison, most nuclear reactors that are being constructed today are designed to produce about 1,000 megawatts of electricity. So for example, the reactors that are under construction in Georgia at the Vogel site are designed to generate about 1,100 megawatts of electricity. So compared to that, a small reactor is generating much less electricity. And in, since the 1960s, what's happened is that these nuclear reactor designs started, nuclear reactors were designed to produce more and more power because, next slide, please, because most of these initial set of reactors did not perform so well. Can I have the next slide, please? Yeah, so for example, I'll give one example of a nuclear reactor that was a small reactor. This was built in Elk River in Wisconsin, and it was, construction started in the late 1950s, ended in 1964, when it was hooked onto the grid. And then by 1968, it was actually shut down. The reason it was shut down was twofold. One was the, there was a problem with the reactor that required a fairly, fairly major component to be replaced. And at that point, the utility that was constructing this looked at the economics of it and decided that the small amount of electricity that it was generating was really not worth the cost. So they decided it was not worth replacing that equipment, and they essentially shut it down after just four years of operations, right? And the construction cost of this particular reactor was over 250% of the initial estimate. Next slide, please. Another reactor which sort of had a very similar fate was constructed in Colorado, what's called Fort St. Rain. It was of a reactor design that had not been constructed in the United States before that. It was one of, first of a kind, a pebble bed reactor, sorry, a high-temperature gas-cooled reactor, which looked great on paper, but when they actually ran the reactor, it operated very little of the time. So you can see on the left-hand side, there's this little graph of how much electricity it was producing. And essentially, it was producing only a fraction of what it was due to produce, and it was shut down a lot of the time for repairs and other kinds of problems. So when, in 1988, the utility decided to shut it down, The New York Times carried out, carried a headline that said, "The World's Safest Reactor Is Closing Because It Rarely Runs." And so the, the, the model of the story here is that on paper, almost all reactors look good. But when you actually build them, you find that there are lots of problems and kinks which may not be apparent when you look at the design. Okay, next slide, please. So the bottom line also about why the nuclear community decided to move from small reactors to building 1,000-megawatt reactors is because when you build small, you lose out on what are called economies of scale, right? And I've just put in a little equation to show how this is captured, but the, the essence of the idea is fairly simple. If you think about any car, kind of a power plant, or even a kind of industrial equipment, a nuclear plant that generates 10 times as much electricity will not need 10 times as much concrete or need 10 times as many workers to be working there, right? The costs go up much more gradually than the amount of power that it produces. Therefore, the revenues that come in are going to be more than compensating for the extra cost involved in increasing the size of the reactor. So this is the fundamental reason why small reactors went out of vogue and the nuclear industry decided to build larger and larger reactors, right? And this, when you go back to small reactors as New Scale is doing, you are essentially setting back the clock and going back to a design where you will not gain from these economies of scale. The second thing that happens when you come to a small reactor is that the efficiency of the reactor, by which I mean how much of the neutrons that are produced inside the nuclear power plant are going to be captured by the reactor itself, and how much of it escapes out. And what that essentially translates to is that the nuclear plant, if it's small, will require more uranium to fuel the reactor for the same number of kilowatt-hours of electricity that it generates, and it will produce more radioactive wastes of different kinds, spent fuel, low-level waste, and so on, for each unit of electricity that's generated, right? So this is just a technical property that you gain when you go to larger reactors and you lose when you go to smaller reactors. Next slide, please. So if, what many people in the nuclear community would say is that, oh, this, the initial costs are high, but as you build more and more nuclear reactors, you're going to become cheaper, right? But it turns out that if you look at the experience in most countries that have built nuclear plants, as you build more and more nuclear plants, the costs of building them have increased rather than decreased. So on the graph that, on the top there, what I've shown is that as, in the, in the two countries that have built the most number of nuclear plants, namely, the United States and France, costs have actually increased with time. And one way to understand why that might be the case is that every time there is a major accident somewhere, let's say there's a Fukushima, there's a Chernobyl, there's a Three Mile Island, the designers have to put in additional safety features to, to ensure that these kind of accidents don't happen, or at least lower the risk of those kinds of accidents. And that adds to the cost of nuclear power plants. This is unlike every other source of electricity generation that you've seen, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. The second thing which, to note, is that in the case of small modular reactors, what companies like New Scale would say is that, you know, the, over a period, even though the initial first-of-a-kind plant might be expensive, as you build more and more plants, you will learn from the experience of building the first ones, figure out what went wrong, you can try to correct for them, you can try to find efficiencies in production and so on, and thereby the cost would go lower. So we've done some quantitative analysis of how many of these reactors you would have to build for the cost of a small reactor to become comparable to that of a large reactor in per-unit production terms, right? So what, you can't, a small reactor would obviously cost less than a large reactor, but the amount of power it produces is more than proportionately smaller, right? So you can consider this as the difference between, let's say, a car and a large bus, right? So in order for you to produce the same amount of power, you'd have to have, or to carry the same number of passengers, you would have to have many more cars. So anyway, so the, back to the point. If you would like to compensate for the laws of economies of scale, what you would have to do is to build these by the hundreds, if not the thousands, depending on what kind of assumptions you're making about the learning, about the laws of economies of scale, right? And so this kind of, it's not clear that there is a market for these many reactors, nor is it clear that so many communities are going to be willing to be building the loss leaders, the initial reactors that are going to be expensive, right? In the particular case of UAMS, I think one of the aspects that's going to try to lower the cost is some funding from the Department of Energy, and we can talk about that later. But nevertheless, the point is that it's, even in the long run, it's not expected for these small reactors to become economically competitive with even large reactors. And as you might know, even large reactors have not been economical in the United States in the last decade or so. There are a number of old plants that are shutting down at this point. Okay, next slide, please. So the other historical element that I would like to mention is that in almost all nuclear plant designs and construction projects, what you see is an evolution of cost as the project goes from initial conception to actual completion, right? So in the, a big study of a number of nuclear projects, around 180 projects around the world, found that 175 of them had exceeded the budget that was initially allocated for them, 97% of them. And the average cost overrun in all of these was about 117%, which means that the cost was more than double what was initially estimated. And the, most of them also had a time overrun, with most of them taking about 64, on average, taking about 64% more time than was initially estimated for the construction period, right? And we see this quite, this is not just a case in the old times. Even the most latest design that is being constructed right now in the state of Georgia and Vogel, you see that as the AP-1000 nuclear reactor that is designed by the Westinghouse Company and is being constructed in Georgia, as the project went from initial discussion, when Westinghouse first put out the design, they had estimated a cost of roughly around $2,000, $1,900 in today's dollars, way back in 2003. And when the Georgia project was first approved, that cost had already gone up to roughly about $5,000 per kilowatt. So these are dollar per unit of power capacity that's being constructed. And then as the project has become closer to completion, that cost has got more than, nearly doubled right now, and it's about $8,600 per kilowatt. The total cost of the project is now running around $28, $29 billion. At this point, initially, it was expected to be about $14 billion when the construction started. And this is a very consistent pattern, right? And there's no reason to think that newer projects are going to be any different from this. Next slide, please. This, you can see the same pattern in New Scale as well. So when New Scale first was proposed as a design, it came about in a more simplified form as a, as a result of a theoretical project that was carried out by Idaho National Laboratory and the University of Oregon, Oregon State University, sorry. And they had anticipated that the costs would be much lower than what it is currently you're seeing today. And as the project has sort of gone from initial, initial conception to the more sort of, as the project sort of has gone through different phases of finalization and the reactor design has become more detailed, what you see is that the cost has gone up. So in 2015, New Scale put out its first estimates of what the cost of electricity was going to be. And at that point, they had assumed it would be around $5,000 per kilowatt. More recently, in 2017, if I remember right, they decided that their project could actually generate more power, and so then they lowered their cost estimate, and then it went down to about $4,200 per kilowatt. But if you look at the current numbers that seem to be circulating for the cost of the UAMS project, the total cost seems to be something like $6.1 billion for the whole cost. And if you use $6.1 billion as it is, without including the subsidy from the DOE, that's around $8,500 per kilowatt. It's just the total cost divided by the total number of kilowatt hour, kilowatts that the plant is capable of generating. On the other hand, if you think about, if you include the subsidy of $1.4 billion that the DOE is promising, that cost will come down to about $6,500 per kilowatt. Now, if you look at the 2015 cost estimates and the subsequent cost estimates for electricity that New Scale is producing $65 per megawatt hour or $55 per megawatt hour, that doesn't fit with the, what is the pattern that you see of cost, cost increases, right? So in principle, I would expect to see that the cost estimate today for electricity should be much higher than what they said in 2015. But instead, what you see New Scale saying is that the cost has come down. I don't understand how that's happening. There is no, I have not seen any detailed methodology being put out. There are no clear details about the assumptions that are going into this particular calculation. So I don't know where this number comes from. I've tried to reproduce it through my calculations, and I've failed. So I don't really know what's happening, how they are able to come up with a cost estimate of $55 per megawatt hour. So this is something that you might want to look into and ask for more transparency at this point. Okay. Can we get the next slide, please? Okay. In this period, while these New Scale costs and AP-1000 costs have been going up, what you see is that alternative source of electricity generation, in particular, renewable sources like solar and wind, have become a lot cheaper. So today, if you were to look at any electricity portfolio, what you find is that some of the cheapest sources of generation of electricity are from wind and solar, right? And in the last, this has been the trend for the last several years. In the last couple of years, what is interesting is that many of these solar projects are now being coupled with a few hours of storage that allow for electricity generation even after the sun has set. And so when you include a few hours of storage, they are, they are still bidding at costs of the order of about $38, $39 per megawatt hour, which is far less than the kind of cost you are being claimed even after a huge DOE subsidy and all these questions that I've had, asked about the methodology. So that's something, again, that you would need to consider when you're trying to make your decision. Next slide, please. Finally, one argument that is often made is that small modular reactors can serve as a backup to the intermittent source of electricity, particular wind and solar. And New Scale itself put out a paper about five years ago where they came up with this graph of how New Scale can compensate for the output from a wind field. And, but what they don't mention is that when you do this kind of backing up, then what you're doing essentially is reducing the number of hours or the output of the New Scale plant, right? The logic is that when wind or solar has been constructed, there is almost no cost to generating wind or solar power after that. All the costs are capital costs. That's because wind and solar don't require any fuel costing. Whereas in the case of a nuclear plant or a coal plant or natural gas plant, you have to supply fuel. And therefore, as and when you have renewables generating electricity, it makes economic sense to use it. And therefore, what you would want to do is to turn down your New Scale or your nuclear reactor or whatever other source of electricity you're using. But when you do that, the utilization of the nuclear plant reduces. So in this particular picture, if you look at, what you find is that there's roughly a 20% decrease in the amount of utilization of the nuclear reactor, which then means that the cost of generating electricity will go up by roughly about 20% as well, right? And that's because what you're doing is to divide the cost of running, constructing and running the reactor among a fewer number of kilowatt-hours. So the attraction of, or the claim about using SMRs to back up wind and solar also means that there is a cost penalty that you'll be paying for that, right? And that has to be sort of taken into account when you try to evaluate these costs. You cannot have both. You cannot have SMRs backing up wind and solar and SMRs costing less in terms of cost. Next slide, please. Okay, just want to now say a few words about the progress of the project. So when New Scale started, the initial claims were that, and that were made around 2008, was that it uh, and that were made around two, two thousand and eight, was that it would submit its application by twenty ten. Uh, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission will, uh, uh, will license it and the plant will start producing electricity by twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And by twenty ten, that had moved to submission by twenty twelve, uh, and having its reactors online by twenty eighteen. Now, it's only in twenty sixteen that new scale even submitted its application towards, on December thirty-first of that year. And, uh, right now, uh, the, with the, uh, reactor design is under review by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission after, and there's some problems there, I'll come to that. But assuming that everything goes well from now on, uh, it appears as though UAMs will, uh, is not slated to start, uh, functioning and generating electricity before twenty twenty-nine. Um, and this is much later than initial, uh, estimates. Uh, and there are a number of, uh, reasons why this might actually be, uh, delayed even further. Uh, and the most important of them is that the new scale project, the evaluation of that at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has shown up a couple of problems. Next slide please. Uh, the, uh, there are two safety, important safety concerns that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, as well as this body called the Advisory Committee on Reactor Safeguards have identified. Uh, one has to do with something called the steam generator, which is of a very unique design in the new scale. The steam generator is the part of the re- reactor that converts the heat that is produced in the reactor into steam, which is going to go and gen- uh, drive a turbine that will generate electricity. And there are some unique, this, it's a very unique design, which also means that there are kind, there are problems that are expected to come with that particular thing. One having to do with certain kinds of corrosion and other having to do with certain kinds of instability. And there's, there's disagreement within the advisory committee about whether to grant new scale the, uh, license to actually construct the, the design certification uh, at this point. And what they have basically said is that this particular problem will have to be resolved by new scale. And whoever is applying for the construction permit and operation permit, uh, the, the so-called, um, uh, the construction and operation license authorization will have to deal with this problem and prove to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that this problem has been addressed. Another problem they have found has to do with, uh, a potential, uh, accident scenario, which they again felt, uh, has not been addressed. And so there are a couple of problems that they have identified, which have been kicked down the line, as it were. Uh, and the other earlier source of problem, which is going to be a source of delay, is the fact that the design that new scale has submitted to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission uh, only, uh, is, is an older design, which is, uh, designed to generate fifty megawatts of electricity or six hundred megawatts in all, when they built a dozen, uh, units that are going to the, uh, whole power plant. Now, the design that new scale is using to make its claims about fifty-five dollars per megawatt hour and so on is a slightly newer version of the design, uh, which can generate up to sixty megawatts or seven hundred and twenty megawatts in all. And that design has not been even looked at by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. So new scale will have to go through another process to make sure that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission approves that. And we have no idea what kind of problems might come up when that review process goes on. Uh, next slide please. Yeah, uh, a last issue is that the, um, possible source of delay is that new scales main investor, this company called Flower, uh, has been having severe, uh, financial problems. Since two thousand eighteen, uh, its stock price has declined considerably. And all its financial advisors are basically saying, you guys need to reduce your exposure to risky projects such as the new scale, right? Uh, so far, um, Flower is continuing with the new scale project, but all their, um, uh, public, all the discussions they are talking about suggest that they are cutting down their investment and they're going out to look for other investors in this project. It's not clear whether there are going to be other investors who are interested in investing in this project at this point. And if that investment does not come, then new scale will have difficulty trying to address all of the problems that Nuclear Regulatory Commission has identified. As of now, new scale has spent, and, and DOE have spent roughly about a billion dollars, nine hundred and fifty million dollars on the development of this design. And, uh, the estimates are that it requires another half a billion dollars, five hundred million dollars to go before they will be ready for design certification. And the question is where that money is going to come from. Okay, la- uh, last slide please. Yeah, so I'll just sort of end. I've talked, talked a little longer than I expected. Uh, but anyway, I'll just sort of, the final thoughts I would say is that my, uh, understanding of the history of, uh, nuclear power in general and small reactors in particular suggests to me that the new scale, uh, UAMs project will be more expensive uh, than other alternatives at this point and will likely be delayed. Uh, I have doubts about the current cost estimates for the cost of electricity. And I would urge that, uh, we need more transparency about the assumptions that are the companies using the cost of construction, the time of construction, the financial packages that are involved, the subsidies that are involved, as well as the methodology that they used to do, come up with these costs. And, uh, lastly, the one thing which I would say, which I'm not, which I've not talked about, but you all probably know is that there's a long history of utilities losing lots of sums of money on, uh, nuclear power projects, including from the Washington, uh, in Washington State and most recently, uh, the, uh, Jacksonville, uh, utility in Florida, which is invested in the Vogel project, trying to pull out, but it's unable to do that. So I'll stop here and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry for taking longer than I expected.
Thank you for that. That was very informative. Um, any questions from the council?
Yeah, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to debate with a nuclear physicist because I've got a ten dollar bill says I'll lose that one. But, uh, a couple of things. I, I think, uh, the theory, your theory is, is, uh, solid, but we're dealing with, with the SMRs. You're, the ones you showed us are thirty to fifty years old in technology. Hopefully, the technology has come a long way since then. But what my concern has always been is finding an alternative when the coal plants go down. Uh, and as you said, I, we talked months and years ago about storage. I think renewables are the future, but the future isn't here yet. It's not twenty eighty or whenever the technology is here. We live, uh, we've bought some, we're bought into wind, we're bought into solar. But, uh, even you said they're, they're, uh, investing in, or they're developing batteries now that can give you two, three, maybe four hours of, uh, of use. But we need something, and that's what I see this or some other, some other type of generation facility doing is filling in when, uh, we have three months of cloudiness or when the wind isn't blowing, uh. And that's what I see this, you know, this project or some other project that actually generates, uh, power to be able to supply. I'm concerned about Murray Power, Murray Citizens being able to turn lights on and not depend on, uh, renewables until those renewables have come to a point that they can, we can store the energy, we can push that energy down the transmission lines and, and so forth. So I see this project as, as investing. We do have caps. We do have off-ramps. We do have caps that we can get out if, if the price goes higher. I share, I share a lot of your concerns. I think that, uh, I think we need to make sure that those off-ramps, we understand what we're doing as we're going forward. But we really need to do something to make sure the lights come on in Murray in twenty forty. Uh, and I don't know that the technology for renewables will be there yet. Hopefully, they will. But this is, uh, as carbon free as you can get, there's, there's, uh, of course, there's manufacturing costs and there's manufacturing implements on the environment, but that goes with all type of, uh, manufacturing, whether it be renewable or not. So I do appreciate your out, your input and I appreciate the time you gave us. But those are my concerns. Someday, we've got to be able to find a way to either, either solidify renewables or make sure we have the backup power capacity when coal is gone. Uh, you can use natural gas, but that emits, that emits, uh, carbons into the atmosphere, plus we have the fracking. So there's no good, uh, perfect answer, but we've got to find something along the line to complement each other. Thank you, and thank you very much for your time.
Um, should I respond?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Sure. Uh, I think those are great points. I totally agree that, uh, you know, nu- nuclear power should be considered low carbon. Uh, and there are concerns about, uh, the intermittency of renewables. Uh, but I would say two things. First is that, um, the, as you rightly pointed out, you're talking about the twenty forty timeframe, alright? Uh, now, um, I've been looking at, uh, studies of integrating renewables and how you can have grids with larger shares of renewables and how to deal with the intermittency. And in the last ten or fifteen years, what you see is that people used to say, um, in the mid, uh, around, around twenty ten, let's say, that once a grid goes beyond about forty percent renewable electricity, then the cost of maintaining the grid stability is increasing too much. These days, study will, study say it's around eighty percent or even ninety percent, alright? And in the, again, in the last ten years, we see, for example, countries like Germany and Denmark have increased the amount of renewables they use for their grid to about forty to fifty percent, alright? So that number of the, the reliability of the grid is, I don't think, a concern till you reach like a ninety percent level, and that's really far away in any realistic sense. Um, the second thing to say is that, uh, we are not talking about just one wind turbine and to kind of think about it saying, oh, this wind is not blowing, therefore it is not going to, um, uh, generate electricity. We are talking about, uh, a grid with multiple sources of electricity generation and which is connected with a whole bunch of areas. So there are three ways by which I think you can deal with the intermittency. The first is that you rely on different kinds of sources. It's not just wind. It is wind and solar. It could be offshore wind. It could be solar thermal and a whole bunch of things. So renewables is actually a broad set of technologies, if you like. The second, uh, and so, you know, when the wind is not blowing, maybe the sun is shining, et cetera, et cetera. So those are compensatory factors. The second is geographical diversity. So if you're going to be connected in a grid across the country, then if not here, there's electricity being generated elsewhere that can be sent along, uh, at fair, you know, there is going, you have to build transmissions for that, that nothing is come for free, but that possibility also exists. Uh, we talked about storage already and, you know, storage is becoming cheaper. So the question is, what do you expect to be the cost of storage in twenty thirty or twenty forty? And if you look at most of the projections of how fast storage costs are coming, it's fairly clear that storage is becoming, going to become a very substantial part of the grid by that period, right? Uh, so there's a budget thing. Finally, there's also the possibility of shaping demand. It is, yes, it is right that you can sort of, you want to have the lights come on when you want to turn on the, uh, when you turn on the switch. But there are, not all, uh, demands are equally urgent, right? So people have talked about, you know, can you, uh, charge your electric cars at different times? Can you, uh, run your dishwasher at a different time? And were ways by which you can try to manipulate that in order to manipulate the nature of the demand and thereby meet the generation profile. So I'm just saying that, you know, this is not by any means a clear answer. And it is a shifting landscape, but the landscape is shifting very fast. Uh, and definitely faster than the time scale that you should be anticipating for a project like new scale to come online.
I told you, win that argument.
Thank you, Doe.
Rosalba, um, at this point, um, since we don't have that much time left, could we go to Rusty Cannon?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you, Professor. I really appreciate your.
Really for your time. I'm sorry I took much longer than I expected. But I can see I have, you know, a lot of thoughts about this and I couldn't help shedding myself. Thank you.
We really do appreciate that. Um, okay, is Rusty here?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, great, thank you. Let me introduce you. Uh, Rusty Cannon is the Vice President of the Utah Taxpayers Association since October of twenty eighteen. And you received a degree in finance from the University of Utah, Go Utes. And you have over twenty years of experience in government relations, lobbying, financial services and sales and management. So thank you so much for being here and we really appreciate your, your perspective on the, um, small nuclears, the small modular reactor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I will, I'll, I'll go ahead. Um, just, just by way of information, um, I'll be sharing some brief comments similar to what we shared earlier today in a press conference that we hosted on this issue. Um, there was an article that was recently written, actually about an hour ago by the Salt Lake Tribune. Uh, your power manager is quoted in it. Um, we did mention Murray and I'll, I'll echo a lot of what we said uh, earlier in this press conference. But if I could just go through the, the, the talking points briefly and then happy to answer any questions. Um, so by September fourteenth of this year, um, city and town councils that have committed their municipal power rate payers to the UAM's FMR project, also known as the CFPP, we're calling for them to hold a public vote to withdraw from the project. Um, while the initial goal of the project might have been sound to work towards a reliable, cost-effective, long-term power source, the evidence that the Utah Taxpayers Association has been able to examine provides a bleak picture of the massive, uh, high-risk financial commitments that cities, including Murray, will need to make long into the future. Um, the proposal carries the likely potential, as the professor outlined, for delays and cost overruns on unproven technology that continues to be less and less competitive with other alternatives. So although information has been difficult for us to gather because due to a quirk in Utah's open meetings laws, uh, it exempts UAMs from having to allow the public to observe their meetings. Um, but we would like to just briefly explain, um, what we've been able to find out so far and why we think this is the right decision to pull out for taxpayers and for rate payers. So the first indication of why we think this project is, is a bad idea is the level of subscription. Um, right now, um, in a recent project, uh, presentation in Bountiful City Council, uh, it was talked about where the, the project is only about thirty percent subscribed. It's only grown one megawatt out of two hundred and thirteen megawatts of subscriptions in the last year. Um, and we think that's a good indication, just like a good product. If people like it, they're going to buy it. And that's love, uh, realized with these subscriptions and it's, it's quite low. Um, investor-owned utilities have turned down these types of, uh, projects for good reason. And we think the level of subscriptions show that, that relative to coal, natural gas, solar, wind and storage, uh, small modular nuclear reactor power is just not cost competitive. Uh, in addition, the professor went through many projects that have left a lot of state, cities, municipalities and power companies in financial ruin to the tune of tens of billions of dollars. Uh, but let me just briefly describe UAM's situation, which you're probably somewhat aware of. So cities that have subscribed to the project have sunk approximately nine million dollars into this so far, from what we've been able to find. And according to the agreement that you've entered into when the project began, you have to affirmatively vote to withdraw at several off-ramps. You're in an off-ramp period right now by September fourteenth. So, um, the next step, which constitutes obtaining approval for the design of the reactors and acquiring a license, is projected to cost UAMs members approximately nineteen point nine million dollars more. Um, so the various shares that's due from each city is, is, uh, according to their subscription levels. As an example, Bountiful has a share subscription of three point two eight two two percent. So for the next step, they would be stepping up to commit to six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars and change. Um, and then Murray, your subscription level is six point seven two eight six percent, which by our calculation obligates you in the next step, if you don't take this off-ramp to one point three four one million. Um, so in, in your case, that obviously is one point three million that could be used for other city government functions. Police, fire, parks, uh, streets, any other sector, um, function the city provides. This sounds very similar to us to a project that we've always been opposed to, and that's Utopia. Wherein now, uh, Murray continues to have to shell out money every year, uh, into that project that could otherwise be diverted to, uh, uh, costs that you need to. you need to, to fulfill. But the risks only get worse from here, and this is the problem. The approval section of the first phase is scheduled to take until approximately May of 2023, and that's based on current guidelines, or current calendar, which the professor showed has continually been delayed. At that time, the project would enter into the next phase, which is projected to last until November of 2025, about another two-year span. The UAM's cost for members for that phase is an additional $658.4 million. So at that next off-ramp, if you do the math, as an example for Bountiful, they'd be stepping up for 21.5 million in more commitments. Murray would be 44.3 million in commitments. So we don't think gambling 1.3 million now in the hope that things look rosy enough in three years to commit to another 44 million on, makes, you know, makes any sense for, for a city like Murray. So then the last step is the construction phase. And if you look at that, that's when the numbers get fairly staggering. That's scheduled, at least this point, to start in December of 2025, more than five years from now. The cost to UAM's members for that phase is currently over $4.7 billion with a B. So according to the documents we've been able to find, the next off-ramp commitments for UAM's members, which Murray is a member, are $19.9 million, 658.4 million, and then over $4.7 billion. So we think committing cities to that much money on a project that's still untested, hasn't gained approval from the NRC, and relies heavily, and we mean heavily, on federal subsidies every year to the tunes of billions of dollars, as the professor mentioned, is the wrong move. It can put rate payers and taxpayers on the hook for massive sunk costs for decades to come. And we think the money that you've spent so far on this project pales in comparison to what you'd be committing to if you don't take this off-ramp. So, in summary, we're urging all city councils, there's 27 municipalities in Utah that we've been able to count that are subscribed to the project, we're urging you to have a vote in public before September 14th to withdraw from the public, or excuse me, from the project. We're also urging the public to contact their city council members and urge the same. And those are the comments that we made today and that we wanted to make here, but happy to answer any questions from council members.
Thank you so much, Rusty, for that update. Anybody have any comments, questions? Any council members? Well, we appreciate you. Oh, Diane, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, with both of these presentations, I hope it has made the council realize that there are plenty of red flags up there, out there, and to, to really think carefully when we take our vote. I'm not sure when that's going to be. Rosalba, I think that's, that's up to you to make that decision when, but it will be a public hearing, right?
Yes, I have asked and spoken to Gio. We can, September 1st, is what I answered.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, and thanks, Council, for letting me provide this information. And to Professor Romana and to Rusty, we really appreciate your time and the information. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the offer. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. We are going to go ahead and move along on our agenda here. Good me, I have papers everywhere. We're going to go ahead and Chief Burnett, you will be presenting about Utah Urban Wildlife Assistant Program. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. It's good to be here. The Urban Wildlife Assistance Program is something that we have access to now that we have started having our animal services done by Salt Lake County. What it is, is a program that's from the US Department of Agriculture, Division of Wildlife Services. And at one point, they, there was some federal funding that it came through to take care of that. But about five years ago, that went away, and the Council of Governments worked to get the program back. So the program, what it is, is it's, administered, is administered by the US Department of Agriculture, and they're the ones that come out and deal with what are considered to be non-indigenous species or urban pests, nuisance animals, which specifically are raccoons and skunks. And since we do have some issues with raccoons and skunks, it was something that we thought we should look at adding to our animal services this year to see how, how much we use it, whether it's something we continue on in the next few years. Salt Lake County administers the, the program, so all the cities that are involved in this program through Salt Lake County Animal Services pay money depending upon the population of the cities, goes to the county, and the county helps us work with the US Department of Agriculture to have their trappers come out, work with our citizens to, to catch and eradicate as best we can skunks and raccoons. So that's kind of what this is. It's, it's an addendum. It's something above and beyond the, the contract that we, and the services that Salt Lake County provides because it's something that, like I say, is, is done by an outside agency. So we, we thought it'd be something we should look at this year. It's $12,928 a year. And again, we'll monitor it this year to see how much we utilize it, how much our citizens use it, and something we can look at every year as, as it's not necessarily part of the, the contract that we have with Salt Lake County.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I was reading through the packet, and I first was kind of looking at the cost, and my husband was like, are you kidding me? We can smell a skunk right now. So my question is, do we know what other cities are participating? Because I do have a concern that if we're participating, but Taylorsville isn't, I'm like three houses away, they're just going to run over to cross the street and then run back to my yard.
Well, Taylorsville, I believe, have their own animal control, but the ones that are participating through the county is Salt Lake City, Midvale, Mill Creek, Bluffdale, Draper, and all of the, the metro township. So, you know, now whether Taylorsville is, we don't know. That would be something that they would be handling themselves since they either have their own animal control or they're working with West Valley. I don't remember how that goes. Yeah, you're, you're right. It's kind of like doing police work. We chase them out of Murray, and they run to Taylorsville and back and forth.
That makes sense.
Whatever the other problem. So, yes. And where you can parkway, there tends to be some rat, or skunks and raccoons that tend to congregate in, in a lot of the neighborhoods that are close by. We've got skunks here at City Hall, so we know they get around.
They do. Thanks.
Brett, did you have a question?
I was just going to say that I think this is awesome. I've had more contacting me on raccoons, not skunks, but on raccoons over the past couple of years than I've had the entire time I've been on. So this will be, I, I think that's, it's worth the $12,000 in my area because we, I get contact, probably about, I've had about 10 contacts over the last couple of years, which is a lot. So I think it's good.
Is it just, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. We get really excited when you bring up raccoons, like this is, this is the good stuff. So raccoons and skunks, is it only raccoons and skunks? Or if I've got bats in my garage, I have a laundry list, and I just got to know.
No, this is only rat, or rat, I almost said rats. Only raccoons and skunks is all that, that this involves. Now, if there are other things, they may, they have resources that they will be able to work with us on, or our citizens, as far as companies that will come and take care of the rats or the, or the bats. But yes, this, this is just raccoons and skunks.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, Diane. Do we need a budget amendment to fund this program?
Yes. I was, I'll just answer for the chief. We're, it's going to be included in the rollover, and I'm going to just keep some of the non-departmental increase in our property tax that we, we stuck into, non-departmental miscellaneous, to pull that out and, and put it where the, in the police department where animal services comes from.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
If you don't have any other questions, have a good day. All right. Let's go ahead and move on. Melinda will be presenting Van Winkle Crossing Memorandum of Understanding. Go ahead, Melinda.
Thanks, Chair Dominguez. Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity tonight to present to you a memorandum of understanding between Murray City and Kimball Investments. You may recall, last year, the city council approved a general plan amendment and a zone change for the property up on 9th East at the Van Winkle, the commonly referred to as the Kmart site. After that zone change, Kimball Investments came through the Planning Commission and received a conditional use permit through the mixed-use zone. And part of the requirements for their mixed-use development is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city council. So Jared Hall, our Planning Division Manager, has actually been the one facilitating this MOU. So I'm going to let him take over and give a presentation, but also want to let you know that we do have Mr. Justin Kimball with us this evening on the Zoom call as well. So if there's any questions the council may have for him as the applicant, he's available for questions. Go ahead, Jared. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Would I be able to share the screen for the slides? Is that something I can do? Yep, looks like I can. So-
Yes, you can.
Okay. Can you all see that? Should say?
Yes.
Not the right one. I'm sorry. Let me see if I can, there we go. Okay. So, excuse me. So this is a memorandum of understanding that is related to the Van Winkle Crossing project that Melinda was just referring to. And just a little bit of information and background about that, about that project, and then we'll get into why it needs a memorandum and what this memorandum does. It's just about 10 and a half acres, the old Kmart site, like she mentioned. It's 421 units. I'm not sure why that won't go forward, but 421 units, you should all be seeing the aerial photo now. Is that what you're seeing? Yep, great. Okay. So like she said, this is the 10 and a half acres of the Kmart site. The council did vote, and the planning commission recommended to rezone that to mixed use, and that has been done. And then subsequently, they, they put in a request for this project. 421 multifamily units, 21,000 square feet plus commercial, and a couple of kind of interior roadways that, that go with that. And this is a point that we'll bring up when we talk about the memorandum more, but there was an accessway from this part of Mill Creek that's to the west of the project that goes out to 900 East that was very important to a lot of different stakeholders that that remain open. And so that gets controlled by the memorandum as well and, and remains open. So this is a, what we call a horizontal mixed-use project. And you might recall from when we, when we did some changes to the mixed-use zoning as a council and staff, one of those changes was to delineate between vertical mixed-use projects and horizontal mixed-use projects. And a horizontal mixed-use is basically exactly what, what it sounds like. There's a mix of uses, residential and commercial, but they're not stacked up on top of each other necessarily. They're, they're spread out horizontally throughout the project. These work, it's, these, these kind of projects work very well. They've been proved to work well in environments that are more, that are a little further flung from the transit sites. And this is over a mile from the nearest train station. So we, we've got to kind of test out our, our new mixed-use zone on this particular site. And so this is a horizontal site. And the reason that we do memorandums of understanding for horizontal mixed-use sites is to, is to control kind of the phasing of the development so that we're sure that we get the commercial development and that it relates well to the rest of the development, the residential portions of the development. So we, we ask for a master site plan that then gets controlled by that memorandum of understanding. And the real base reason that you're seeing the memorandum of understanding as a city council is because it's kind of like a development agreement. And the planning commission's not empowered to make those kind of agreements. They're contracts, really. And they can't do that, but the city council can. And this memorandum that we've, that we've prepared and that, that the developer's side has agreed to, does some kind of key things, and we want to talk about those. First of all, it, it controls the composition of the development. So it stipulates 421 units and 21,000 square feet of retail, and how that happens in phases. The second part is the phasing. So in the first phase, we'll see the first units get built, the first residential units get built, but also we'll see the, the implementation of the infrastructure along 900 East and the utility infrastructure to serve this commercial 21,000 square feet that will be so important for this to be a functioning, kind of a vibrant place for people to live and to shop and to be. In the next phase, we'll see the remainder of the residential units built, and the commercial part will start to get, to get built as well. The commercial phase is, is independent of the other two phases of residential. So we see the infrastructure for it put in, but not necessarily the buildings. They can get built at any time. They might happen during Phase 1. They might happen kind of during Phase 2. They're simply called out as the commercial phase. And there are time limits on all of these different components. That's the other thing, the third thing that the, that the development, sorry, that the memorandum of understanding controls. There's a shot clock of five years for all of this commercial to be built from the date that the memorandum is, is put into place. There's a shot clock of two years for there to be permits issued for the residential. With 900 East and the traffic that's there, and the ability for these commercial components to front there, we're not concerned that they'll get built. We're sure they'll, we're sure that they'll be built and, and constructed. But we do want to have kind of a limit on how much time it would take to see those under development. So that's the third part of it. Another portion that's, that's controlled by the memorandum, another reason that we have it is, as we mentioned, that access from this city, this neighborhood in Mill Creek that goes through this little part of Maureen up to 900 East. I like to call it Mer Creek, where these folks live. They've had access through here for a long time. They're very used to shopping in Ivy Place, which is just to the south here. And we've, we've asked, and the developers have agreed to keep that, those accesses to Ivy Place open. So, and we've created a kind of a, a street look here, although it's private property with easements going across it. So folks will be able to walk out of this neighborhood, stay on sidewalks, and get into Ivy Place, and perhaps shop up on 9th East, where we're going to have new places for them to shop as well and restaurants to, to eat in. Another thing that, that's controlled by the, by the memorandum of understanding is just the implementation of all these various improvements that are part of this master site plan. So we have a requirement for a central feature, and that was, that was done here. So there's, there's space for food trucks to come in here and park, activities to happen. If the trucks aren't taking up space, you could set up temporary stages and have events and that kind of thing. And it's all very well tied into kind of the, the primo restaurant pad here on the, on the northeast corner. And that's all tied into the site with kind of different paving, things like that to draw people through the site. We're really pleased how, how well this turned out. I think it'll be a great project. But to assure that that happens, we want the development agreement, or this memorandum of understanding, to control the master site plan and see that it's all implemented. If, if other parts of the development are sold, if pads are sold, or if other developers come in to finish projects instead, everyone will be, because of this document, will be bound to these kind of site plan improvements that we've already approved as a planning commission. Just so you know the project a little bit, this is the look of the, of the units. They are multifamily units. The majority are single bedroom and two-bedroom. There are a few three-bedroom units as well. There are 421 of them in the different buildings. Another thing that, that's controlled by the memorandum that's important for us is just that performance, like we mentioned, and then there are methods contained in that document for us to terminate the agreement, stop permits, stop issuing additional permits if, if the terms aren't being met, et cetera. So, and I did include a copy of the document, and if you have any questions about it, I'm happy for you to ask them now. But we are, we are recommending, and the planning commission voted to, to do this, to, to approve this site plan, seven to zero. It was a tough meeting, a long meeting, a lot of, a lot of comments, a lot of questions. But in the end, we feel like we got a really good site plan. They'll produce a really good mixed-use development, kind of an urban village up on 900 East. We're excited about it getting implemented. And we are recommending that you approve the memorandum of understanding for the, for the Van Winkle Crossing mixed-use development. You have any questions for staff at this point?
Council?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Does that road give access to the Mer Creek people to 9th East?
It does, and-
Okay, good. Thank you for doing that. That was a big sticker for me.
Yeah, it guarantees access for the Mer Creekians for as long as they- Yeah, it guarantees access for the Mer Creekians for as long as there's development here.
Thank you.
You bet.
Can you kind of, sorry, anybody else have questions? Sorry.
Uh, yes, I was just, when is this scheduled to start?
You mean construction?
Yeah, construction.
We don't know, except that I know that they're they're anxious to get going because they do want to see this memorandum put in place. The memorandum gives them, I believe, two years to get their first permits for residential construction, for residential construction of the first phase, which would also include the infrastructure for utilities for the commercial on 900 East. So a couple of years should be activity.
Okay, I think it looks great. That'll be a real boon for for Murray.
It should be an exciting project.
Yeah, looks great. Thank you.
Brett, do you have any questions? Kat?
Just wanted to say thank you. I just had the same question Diane Diane had. So thank you.
Sure.
Looks awesome.
Thanks. We're really excited about it. Should be a great project to kind of kick off mixed use outside of the city center where we've seen a few projects. We want to start seeing what we can do in other in other areas responsibly too, so.
Go ahead, Kat.
Will any of the housing be affordable housing designated?
I don't know that any of it was designated as affordable. I don't, construction could still happen and they could use they could still sign on to use some funding that that would allow them to do affordable housing or require them to do affordable housing. But my understanding during the entitlement phase was they planned on it all being market rate. We do have a couple of other affordable housing projects coming in the in the pipe, but this isn't necessarily one of them.
Thank you. The other thing I saw in resident comments was concerns about the height. It looked like it's going to be about four stories tall. And I've I've been over there a bunch, but I've never really stopped to look at how tall things are adjacent to it. Will it be the tallest thing in the area or are there similar buildings?
There are a lot of three-story buildings in the area. There are a lot of three-story apartments and condos to the north and to the east. This building closest to to the residential here in Mill Creek is actually the four-story building. So we put the shortest one there. And then the five stories and the five-story with podium, those will be the tallest in the area, yes. They absolutely will, but not by exorbitant amounts. They won't be I don't think they'd be strikingly taller from a distance anyway, because this is, again, a 10 and a half acre site. So you have some some distance buffering for that mass.
So five stories is the the tallest one?
Yes.
So I get that right. Okay, thank you.
So, um, any other comments, Council? So I was reading through the comments and I know Councilwoman Kat in from Mill Creek had concerns about security and safety in the area. I know it's it changed and it's transitional.
Yeah.
And and how how would that look even during the phases of construction?
During construction? Sorry, I couldn't hear you there at the end.
And how do we mitigate that for for the residents in that area as well?
Yeah, I think the the main thing for concerns about security, and I I recall the meeting, it's it's been a while, but the main concerns about security came from people hanging around in the parking lot of Kmart, the empty building, et cetera. And all of those things, and I just reiterated to the council like we did with the commission, all of those things go away. There's nothing less secure than a big empty parking lot at 3:30 in the morning and an empty 50,000 square foot building and homeless people living behind it, which is, when I went to take photographs, there were four or five different homeless folks camped out in the back. That that's been a problem for them in the area for a long time. Under construction, you're not going to see that. This access remains open precisely for safety so that people responding, so that responders from fire departments and police departments can get into this little isolated neighborhood in the best way that they can, which is generally speaking from either Van Winkle on the west side or 9th East up here. I think security is actually, without being too blunt, I think security is going to get better. I I think the concerns about security are, I can see it because it's changed, but I don't think security is going to be an issue for them. Even during construction, you're going to have more activity and therefore less nefarious activity.
And then this is just a better understanding of this process. As far as the plans that have been, have these plans officially all been approved? Can they change them throughout the process? What is that?
There are small changes that can be made, small adjustments to site plans that can be made after approval without returning to the planning commission, but large changes would go back to the commission.
Okay, so like if they wanted to include more units or
Yeah, density of the units, numbers of parking, those kind of things would go back to the commission.
And what is the current parking amount for 400 and?
There are 718 stalls on site, not including some of the on-street parking that would be available up through here. So you have parking in structures, all the building A, this, can you guys still see this screen?
Yeah.
Building A right here, this is a giant parking structure in the middle of this five-story apartment building. Building C here will have podium parking underneath it. So you have a mix of structured parking, podium parking, and then surface parking throughout. And there are 718 stalls total shown on the site right now. So it's about 1.8 per unit. With single bedroom and two-bedroom units, they have 37 more stalls than they would be required.
Okay. I know that's a big issue with their development.
They do worry about parking. I don't think you'll have a parking problem on this site. Most of this parking will happen, even a lot of it will happen on the interior of this structure and then around the buildings here. And a lot of intermittent parking shared between the the retail here and some of the some of the users in the buildings.
Okay, perfect. My last question is about infrastructure in terms of is the neighborhood street wide enough for traffic to come in and out through onto Van Winkle through the neighborhood? And also, the last question I had is about sewer. I know that was that came up in citizen comments. Will this put pressure onto the sewer lines within that neighborhood? Or how would that, how would that come into play with Murray and or would we have a different line completely away from the neighborhood?
That's a good question. And and the answer to that is probably in the construction phase somewhere. Olympus, this is Olympus Sewer District, and so they gave us will-serv letters saying we can handle the 421 units and the additional commercial. It'll probably give them an opportunity to upgrade some of the lines that have been problems in this area to date. So yeah, you'll be looking at new lines and upgrades to lines to make the sewer work. As far as the road, but we're not into any of that yet because we don't have construction documents working. I'm sure that the developer side is starting to size some of those lines, et cetera, but we haven't really gotten into it far enough to know that yet, other than the will-serv letters that say we can handle it. The neighborhood road, that's a great question and some of the citizens' concerns that night were about were about people from the project cutting through the neighborhood to get down to Van Winkle. And and honestly, it it ends up being a trade-off. The only way to guarantee that nobody ever drives through that neighborhood is to block off their access to 900 East. And we didn't feel right about that happening from the public safety standpoint. From a planning and engineering standpoint, this is better connected. It's going to be slow traffic coming through here. And it's not a direct route through that neighborhood in Mer Creek to get down to Van Winkle. You have to kind of know your way through, or you might actually give up at a certain point. You go all the way to the north and try to double back toward Van Winkle. It's not great. Google Maps refuses to route you through there. It just will not do it. It takes you out through Ivy Place, no matter what you try. But part of that is because it doesn't recognize a connection here. That wouldn't necessarily change. So I don't think that traffic through the neighborhood is really going to become an issue. It's not that none is ever going to come there. There will be people that that know that their route takes them better through Van Winkle and they'll learn that route and they will use it. But nine out of 10 of the vehicles coming across this line in either direction, west or east, are going to come from that neighborhood, not from these apartments. That's, and the road is not extra wide or anything, but it can handle some local traffic, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, Jared. Thank you, Melinda. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want the council to know we'll be back in front of you on August 25th for approval of the MOU. And then I don't know, Justin, if you have anything else you want to add to the discussion?
Maybe I'll just clarify one point that I thought was a little bit vague and also in the MOU that's a little bit vague. You asked about the height of the buildings. I think Jared did a great job of of summing that up, how we've kind of weddingcaped it from from the west to the east. Like you said, building B will be the four stories, building A will be five, and then building three, it says five stories with podium. Podium can be a little bit vague. It can be a one-story podium or two. Ours is designed just as a one-story podium, but then there are five levels on top of that. So the total height will appear as six stories. So just wanted to make sure, you know, Kat, you asked that question, wanted to make sure that that was that was understood correctly.
Good point, Justin. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. It looks beautiful. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. We look forward to coming next week or at our next council meeting. Last on our agenda is Kat will be presenting, Councilwoman Martinez, city business news. Go ahead, Kat.
Thank you. So I serve on the Economic Task Force with Councilmember from Midvale, Brian Round, and he has some good community news that he wanted to share with us. And so I just wanted to give him a few minutes to tell us about some upcoming good business things going on here in Murray. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate you you having me on. I kind of apologize for the informality of it, but I deal with it. I have to run real soon. This will be quick because I have to go to my Midvale meeting. So I'll just be really quick. I don't know if you guys heard, but Venicity, that's the, that's my day job. We were just acquired by Mastercard for $825 million with incentives up to a billion. That's a top 10 sale in the state of Utah. The headquarters are in Murray. We have roughly 500 employees, about 40% of them are in, well, when they're not working from home, they are in Murray. And to show its commitment to the area, we have re-upped our lease and doubled our building size over the next year. So Mastercard, you know, pending our government approval will, you know, be a footprint in Murray. And we continue to hire while a lot of people are are, you know, kind of downsizing through everything. And they are pretty pretty well-paying jobs for the area, I would say. A lot of it has to do with data science and computer engineering. And we just want to say, you know, we're in this 5300, 53rd Center Building. There's a lot going on here and we're excited to be a part of your community. And it felt like a good, a good thing to share with you guys is, you know, all the Corona news is kind of trickling through across the country. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or our thoughts, but, you know, we're excited to be here in Murray.
I just want to say that's awesome. Great news.
Yeah, we're excited. Normally, like have some presentation and go there, but instead you get me in a T-shirt and a yellow walled background. So I apologize.
So, Brian, this is Diane Turner. I'm just wondering, when is this going to come to fruition and will the the numbers increase? You probably said that you have 500 employees at this point. So is that going to stay the same? And and how big of an expansion will it be? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's the billion-dollar question. We have to wait for the government to approve. There's, you know, kind of an antitrust process. I'm not allowed to surmise on when that will be. The quickest they can do it is 10 days from now, up to a year. So sometime between 10 days from now and a year from now, we'll know. And we've already started the expansion into the space regardless. Our product's selling itself regardless of the the Mastercard branding. So, you know, we should open up the second, the ground second story, the third story by mid-November. So this year, we will already double our building size. We only have 40% of the employment here, but we'll probably, so we'll probably hire 30 or 40 more for the next year or two. But you know, some places bring in hundreds of jobs at $15 an hour. You know, our 30 or 40 are much more competitive, provide a much higher salary for for individuals that have, you know, advanced degrees in computer engineering, things along those lines. So soon, hopefully soon.
Great. Sounds, sounds very nice. How many work from home?
About, there's about 15 of us in the office, you know. So almost everyone. We take that very seriously. You know, we we don't want to be the epicenter, you know, of of anything along those lines. So we we sent everyone home. And then when the numbers were hitting in the 80s or 90s, we trickled in about 15 or 20 of us. And then, you know, they had that big spike and we told, you know, the 200 more to just, you know, hang tight until further notice. So almost everyone.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I just wanted to thank you for joining us today and just sharing some good economic news. It's just, it's always a good time for good news. So thanks for joining us.
Yeah, no, thanks for having me. I'm going to run to my city council meeting and and I'm sure I'll talk to you guys later.
Thank you. Have a great day. All right, that wraps it up for Committee of the Whole. Let's go ahead and come back at 6:30 and enjoy your short break. Thank you, everyone.